The one that has the pink.
Good evening, and thank you, everybody, for coming in for an extra work session tonight. And we'll get started without one of our colleagues. It's okay with everybody. I'd like to do the pledge in the moment of silence at the regular meeting. So let's move right down to roll call, please.
Just one second. Commissioner Kramer?
Oh, I'm here.
Commissioner O'Rourke is not here yet. Commissioner Rexroth?
President.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
President.
Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
President.
Okay, we now have an agenda. The purpose of our work session is discussion of the budget process. And thank you to our three experts that are here tonight. Kathy, thank you for being here. Jen, thank you for being here. And the floor is yours.
Kathy handed out some good details and special reports, but I'm going to start with the basics with you tonight. And the last one I just handed out is the Breton one, the top, so jail division.
Public comment.
Chairman, should we have?
It says we're going to approve the agenda on here.
We skipped that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Could I have a motion?
Michelle did, yeah.
I would move, I would make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye.
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 We now have an agenda.
We have public.
And a public comment.
For public comment now.
I saw no public. Any public comment?
Shall I run up there and say something?
I say no public comment. I suppose we've got Commissioner comment. No, we don't. You don't get your chance. So we'll go right down now to the business of the work session. Thank you for keeping me on it. Doug.
I was.
And Melinda.
Michelle.
Hello again. Nice flowers here. Okay, so back to the last document that I passed out just before we got all in here. At the top, it says the date, and it says Breton one, expense report current. It says county area, period, ending four thirty twenty-three, and it says general fund, jail division. The reason I chose to start with the jail division is because it encompasses almost every and all account number that you will possibly see during your time here, the looking at claims and accounts, and/or if you're looking at post audit. So I had a lovely session with Chris Kramer today, so this is kind of like what I'm going to share with you. The very first numbers, two-two-five, three-fifty-one, seven-oh-two. And if you enter the seven-oh-two, and you go all the way down to two-two-five, three-five-one, seven-twenty, that is controlled by the board commissioners. Your department head and your legislative official does not control those numbers. Those are solely controlled by you as a board with negotiations with your contracts, with your non-union personnel policies. So anything that you change or make amendments to when it's coming to salaries, that affects, as you can see, first, you have overtime. Granted, that is a budget item that they ask you for at budget time. You could decline, you could save more or less. Then your salaries are set. Then you have a work holiday, a non-work holiday. Our employees hired prior to 2013 in this group of the jail division employees, they still receive longevity payments if it's negotiated. In this group, the next line item is salaries, personal leave payoff. This is a negotiated item through your union contract so they can sell their time back. It's a time period in December that if they haven't used it by, it's automatic, in essence, automatically paid out at their current rate of pay. We have a gun and uniform allowance that's also negotiated. And then here comes your fringes, is what we call it. The next one is social security. So you're going to have seven-point-six-five for anything that goes on the W-2, other than travel that's not reportable to the federal government. Then the next is hospitalization. Hospitalization ties into what we call, I'll call my first allocation, cost allocation plan. Per employee, we have a set amount set by the governor. We can choose to do less, we cannot do more. And that follows in line with what we call our insurance fund. Our insurance fund is where, when you negotiate with the walters on our Blue Cross National Contract, that's where this comes from. So we pull it from everyone's budget, we put it into what I can call a POTS, which is our cost allocation, and we pay our bills from there. So instead of having every department have a specific percentage of employee, we pull a firm amount and we put it there. So I can tell you, when I started here in 2005, each and every department that's in this building or next door, we had a line item for each check. The check was the face of the check, and then there was ten pages behind the check, because you had an allotment for each employee and each department. So this was just a way to take those, especially when we became self-insured, so we can follow the trends. That'll be something later, Kathy and I'll talk to you about cost allocation. Following the trend, meaning self-insured, so those that are on the policy and those that are not drive the costs either way, those that are not and those that are. So we watch that, and we watch that, I would say aggressively, aggressively. All right, so the next one would be the hospitalization buyout. Again, per union contract, negotiations, or a non-union personnel policy. We have a specific amount tied to family, two persons total. Yeah? And then, in this case, the next line item is the life insurance. And this is where the seven-twenty ends as part of the board packet. This is a negotiated item. Each employee, if they're part-time, can have $10,000 in life insurance on them. The board commissioners says $30,000. Full-time employees have $50,000. Years ago, prior to me coming on in 2005, you used to be able to have sick leave of 30 days. Is that correct? Thirty or ninety?
Yeah, it was thirty. I'm going way back. It was 240 at one point.
Yep. So they used to maintain a large bank of sick time that they could utilize instead of having a short-term or long-term disability. I would say probably, because it was prior to me, I would bet that it's a Gatsby in the sense to where anything you had on your books that was a leave, so it's either comp, vacation, or personal, you associate an hour and a dollar amount to that thing that goes under audit. It's a liability that's paid out to the employee. So if you have 240 days of personal time, or 30 days of personal time. So when that happens with the short-term, long-term, that's where you get, people have 13 days, they'll have 12, 10, depending on negotiations. So our short-term picks up a $500 maximum. That $500 maximum is for a short time, meaning six months. If you are in disability longer than that, you revert over to a long-term policy. And the long-term policy can go up to the age of, I believe, a 65 or 67. And there's a maximum amount that you can have. So all that is tied into the seven-twenty.
So Jen, you said that we, in budget, decide items up to this, after this, it's, okay. So you've just done all the budgeted items.
Yep. So in essence, the board, as Michelle has talked me through the years, is the driving factor of how it's negotiated with your contracts and your salaries as to how the, from seven-oh-two to seven-twenty are budgeted. So if elected official, if you were to ask an elected official to cut their budget 20%, they can't touch lines seven-oh-two to seven-twenty. So you're going to have to find an amount somewhere else within that budget.
Right. To expand on that, it's what I touched on last month. It's not only that, because of your cost allocations and the square footage any office takes up in this building plus community room, your hands end up being tied because you can't cut the computers, you can't touch the telephones.
And we'll get to those.
We're supporting Jerry's budget. So you can control your office supplies, your postage, your education, your contractual services, your travel. And Doug has a question.
Seven-seventeen is, I assume, social security and Medicare?
Yes. Sorry. Seven-point-six-five percent. Yep. And your retirement is going to be, there are people that have murders that are locked in at a rate prior to 2013. We have closed groups, we have one open group. The open group for 2023 is eight-point-two percent. So for any employee that is hired past 2014, it's eight-point-two percent of their salary that we pay into their retirement.
And we have different.
We have, not that it's for stay, but we have different retirement levels.
All of the new employees hired since 2014 have a different level without the bells and whistles of longstanding, because we still have people that retired 20 years ago drawing on our retirement, and those are closed groups. We still have active employees that are still on some of those groups. So we have multiple groups with different funding levels. And we've been very aggressive in keeping our funding levels pretty much above 80%. I get quarterly reports on that, and the auditors will be touching on that because we're waiting for our actuaries to come, and I have not seen them yet.
Come on, wait till June.
That should be included in our audit, but try and see.
Well, it's usually.
Not to get you off track.
Okay. So down from there, the next line item, so that's what we're talking about, seven-twenty-seven, is going to be your office and operating supplies. So if you want to look across the columns, month-to-date, jail spent $44.96. Current-to-date is $1,100, and their budgeted item, their budgeted for the year is $16,000. So that's how that reads. Next would be postage. They have clothing and bedding that they pay for their inmates. And then they also have a uniform line item, and that covers the county pays for their uniforms. So next is gas and oil. And that's, they spent year-to-date, 2014, and this is 2,500. They have a vehicle that they use, it's called our jail, our prisoner transport van. And so when they transport, they take that, and they drive the prisoners where they need to go. So the next one from that is ammunition. So you see occasionally that they'll go sit around and guard the club, and they'll do education. They used to actually put this in education, and I separated out a few years ago, Chris, ammunition really didn't look like education, but. All right, medical supplies, then that one is for the jail as well. If there's something that they need, they might buy a thermometer you'll see come through, a blood pressure cuff, some things like that. Repair and maintenance isn't really typically something that they spend a lot of. As you can see, there's nothing this year so far. A lot of times, if they have a printer go down, or, you know, something that, something within the jail that needs repair, that's where we would see that. If it's an actual, like a sink goes down in the jail, law enforcement center for the kitchen for the inmates, that's a building grounds, so that's different. So this is a small amount here for repair. And I wanted to show you this one, because contractual services. This is a budget, they have large contractual services we pay for the jail in main meals. They have sack launches that they take out and or meals that they're providing while they're there. So that's a contractual. Not every department will have contractual services. So that's why this is a good budget to look at. Next is membership dues and fees. This can be for corrections sergeants or lieutenants, and they belong to national or Michigan-based jail division or corrections associations, that's where that would be. Subscriptions, nothing's been paid for this year or so far, but I know that they do have like a magazine or a published paper, weekly, monthly, yearly, whatever, that they do pay for. So food services, so that's my bad. Contractual would be different. So food services is where canteens. So I have to go back and look to see what they have in as contractual, but here's your food services, and that's your meal. So I have to go back and take a peek at what contractual could be. Health services, under three-five-one-eight-three-five, if they have a new employee, they have that person, in essence, vetted. And they see, before we hire them, they see, have already evaluated. A telephone, eight-fifty, that is linked to a cost allocation plan that Kathy and I will cover probably next month for you. We charge, in essence, per phone, so that's where that comes. And then there are cell phones that are dedicated to Lieutenant Roush and then probably a couple others to equal that. Radio communication service, eight-fifty-one. This is where he repairs if he needs his batteries and so forth on their handheld, you know, or something in those regards. We also have a fee that next month we'll talk about. We got to go out for a big project, and so we charge internally for those as well. Next page, we travel. So travel typically would be here for education. Taxable travel, which is eight-sixty-oh-oh-one. Taxable travel, in essence, for this group is per their union contract. When they are away from this building for over six hours, either at a conference or training, or a inmate transport, they're allowed $15 that we pay them. So they have a meal that we reimburse them up to $15. The IRS requirements are, if you do not have an overnight stay, that that is a FICA and a W-2 reportable wage. So we mark it here as taxable travel, it goes on their W-2. They would pay tax on that, you pay social security as well. It's a benefit.
It's a merge report.
Yes, that's correct. There's no merge on taxable travel. So printing and publishing, if he has ads that he would do. When we get even closer, if you haven't seen them already, the county clerk in her elections has the largest printing and publishing budget in the county. And that's because she's utilizing the enterprise at least once a week. I mean, each week, I would say. So she has a large budget there. Rental, so the two-two-five, three-five-one, nine-four-zero is rental. Our rental is per mile, and it's the time that either the van or Lieutenant Roush has a vehicle he uses for supplies. Anytime it marks a mile, we get reimbursement, and it's cost allocated into our motor pool. What is our fees on that?
It's under 80,000 miles, it is 30 cents a mile. If it's over 80,000 miles, Melinda, if it goes over 80,000, it's 10 cents a mile.
Yep. So we can figure, they tell us with the odometer readings, we figure if it's under 80 or over 80, and what that price would be. So you can see, so far for this year, they have a total of $142.10 that we charge. That money comes from this fund and goes into our motor pool, where they replace their vehicles. Again, another cost allocation. I guess the simplest way, like when Michelle was talking about the computer and buildings and grounds and all that, they used to not be what we would call a cost allocation plan. And basically, when the sheriff wanted four cars, that $150,000 just hit his budget that year. And so then it was, Melinda remembers, then this next year he wants five. Now that's only $60,000 in his budget. So many, many years ago, I'm sure this clerk, Cracker, could tell us, they took and basically decided, let's pay per mile, instead of, we're not going to lease, we're going to lease to ourselves, so that there's funds in there to generate these purchases. The only time there isn't funds there, and I am a pastor, the previous finance director would have come to you and said, we don't have this in there, and we need to move that in there. Prior to 2010, we had four Crown Vics. A Crown Vic might cost us $21,000. A Ford, as Melinda's going to grin, is about $46,000. So we used to charge like nine cents and 18 cents, and now it's 10 and 30, because we're not recouping. Because they're wonderful vehicles, they are, they're awesome, but Ford likes to change them each year. So the lights you had on the one from four years ago, you could not put lights on the new one that's coming. If the cage is different on the inside, it's all new equipment. Each time you change over, you have a radio charge. Radio noise comes out, and they pull the button out, because we have to sell it. But they don't get to put it in the next one, because it's not usable there. So that's where your rental, your cost allocation. We asked for that in 2002, maybe, to raise that, 21 or 22. I realized, maybe we went in 20, we realized that we weren't recouping as fast as they were purchased, you know, going out, that we couldn't, we didn't have enough money in the motor pool. So a couple times, the general fund is supplemented. Jerry had a wonderful truck that Melinda remembers, 2007. And the Crown and Rocker panels on it, we got all the guards, we made it look beautiful, and then a guy wanted a new one. We didn't have money for the new one. So again, that fund gets supplemented, but now Jerry's new truck, that those miles are being charged out of his budget and into the motor pool. So it's kind of like a catch game. You're looking at it as, what do we have out there, what could it be exposed to? How much money do we have in there? What do we need to adjust?
Jen, touch a little bit about, you know, puts these out for bids, and we are recouping higher value.
Yes, we are. Yeah, we used to get two or three thousand for a Crown Vic, now we can get anywhere from eight to 12 on a, on a new Ford. So we are seeing that money come back. It's just, the difference was, early on, with that Ford Explorer, like I said, they didn't change it much, you know? And now it's like Ford is having the excitement of, ooh, let's design this little crank in the back. Well, now that crank prevents your gate, you know, your thing to prevent people coming up front and getting you, you know, in the car, basically, you know? So it's got to be retrofitted a little bit different. So that's where, that's where that rental comes in. When you see it on here, it's not that we're renting cars. I'll swear, it's kind of like an internal lease for rental.
How many miles do they normally roll those at?
You know, before, when we had a Crown Vic, 120 was the max. Now, I think they're going out for bids, 130, 150, so we are holding them a little bit longer. But you'll see when they switch out tires, you know, you'll see those invoices in November when they take and put all the winter tires on, and then take them off.
Some of the safety requirements are also outlined in their union contracts.
Right.
It does state in one of the contracts that, yes, after a certain amount of miles that they are to have at least be inspected for safety.
Yeah, because at like 140, that would be 24,000 plus 6,000, only be 30,000 worth of mileage you accrued. And that's not going to be enough to replace that vehicle, if you're even close. So this mileage number looks low to me, especially in today's market, if I'm looking at replacing vehicles, even over three years, they're up about 20%.
Right. So most likely, they'll have to be reevaluating and remitting us.
Right, and we do, when the vehicles go out, it's not something we generally go out for bids. I would take the state bidding process. So we're going through a state bid that does give them lower for us. Someone else has already done the work, so that, that does help a little bit.
Yeah, it does help us.
They have a rotation that these vehicles are on.
Because they don't have all the bells and whistles either, in a sense, when someone goes to purchase it, it doesn't, you know, it's not going to have, I think, does this even come with a radio? No. No.
But you have a substantial outfit charge on it, then, besides that.
It doesn't come with a console?
Yeah.
Do they crank or power?
Uh, they crank. They crank.
So it's the bare bones. So, you know, great teenager car, not so much for the mom vehicle. You know?
Yeah, oh, that's bad.
Oh, okay. All right, next. Computer charges, the computer charges stay rental as well. So we'll get into that when we go in here a little bit later with our budget amendments. So Leanna was here and gave you an update on Tuesday, and so you've seen a couple of her requests so far. And like I said, I'll dive into the computer. So anywhere there's a computer, someone's getting charged, because we need to generate revenue back into her fund so that she can pay our simple bills. Simple bills like email accounts and Microsoft SQLs, and then the Microsoft, all those fun things to save the net. So anything that she purchases, as well as her salaries, needs to be covered, and those are covered in the cost allocation. So this is, at this point, is this is their share, which is 11,000 of her budget. The coffee machine rental, it is four cents for black and white, eight cents for color. So we charge back so that net link, we have an agreement, net link, so this is also cost allocated. Buildings and grounds is the same, which is the next one down. Jerry's budget is repair and maintenance, as well as utilities and staffing. Jerry's budget took a huge hit in 2022. I was the type of finance director that watched every bill come through his budget. I made sure that he was covered, that the county was covered. So when we started working on heat pumps at 1,300 and 1,500 dollars a pump, instead of replacing them because they needed work, over multiple of those happening and things that the law enforcement center were at a situation where bringing forward to you to amend his budget, because at year-end, he had a negative fund balance, which means everything was sucked out of his budget. And what I planned, you know, with Kathy and myself, is when you see those claims in the accounts, I think you can take great pleasure, I guess, in knowing that comfort, that she had looked at it. Right. And that if there is something that's going to make us aware, that's the time where, in the past, I would have called Jerry and say, hey, what's going on? What do you got going? In 2022, they repaired a hole in the sidewalk. Sidewalk is not this building, it's not the building next door. Sidewalk belongs to what we've been calling the Forest Safety Fund, your capital building project. Your roof repairs, that's a capital of building project. Those are things that I and Michelle, over the years, have taken care of for the staff. So now, we're more about communication and letting us know if you have something that comes up, something that's maybe not budgeted, because it does have an effect on, in essence, the cost allocation. So for the jail, in this division, they're paying $49,000. I am increasing Jerry's budget in these packages we're going to talk about by about $179,000.
Holy smokes.
I am increasing your IT about by the same on $179,000. So the trick about this, and I'll get down to that in just a minute. So the rest of it is education, so go to education, then capital outlay under 5,000. Capital under 5,000 could be protective vests, usually try and get something, a grant for that. It'd be anything that's out of the ordinary of a paper supply, but isn't over something that can be capitalized.
Jen, can I just interrupt you? Commissioner Lautner's going to have a concern, because when you're throwing those numbers around, I can see her and Commissioner Rexroth looking at you.
That's all right.
Because we're talking about three hundred and some thousand. We're going to.
So back up to those.
We have time.
I want to start with this, so that everybody can follow.
Okay.
Because we're playing a little catch-up from '22 is what we're doing here, because we have budget issues from how that budget was prepared. And when we were thrown back into the mix, some things we can't.
So it's a budget, how is it underspent, or how is it overspent? And is it a, we didn't do this transfer before the end of the year then? So was it an end the year in a deficit?
I moved approximately $75,000 out of Jerry's budget.
We reclassed.
We reclassed. I retired, I've never had, the most entries I have at year-end is three or four, and 75.
What we did was we looked at invoices that went through the 631.
Yep.
Entries through all those invoices, if it was an install description, we did a deep dive on it, because that is not a building that's owned to repair. An installer is a capital, which is purchased. So we reclassed from Jerry's budget to capital. But we kept finding invoices that were charged to Jerry's budget, and they were marked of the install, replace. You know, those words are triggering words when you're looking at invoices, and that's why we started having conversations.
Yeah. When I'm looking at, and that's something that we talked with Gary and Jerry about last month with that, when I'm looking at a $4,000 light bulb invoice, I know you're not just repairing a light bulb, what are you doing? So if you have an actual project, but it's easier for them to just buy the light bulbs and do that. But I don't have 4,000, we didn't have built-in 22. I prepared that budget, we didn't have built-in $4,000 in lights, you know? And like I said, it's one of those where maybe the passion of my work and passing on, I look at this like you're spending my money. So when I look at this like you're spending my money, I might call Jerry and say, why are you spending 4,000 on light bulbs? And then he'll give me the nice deal, and I say, okay, well, that's not your budget, that's this budget. So if we're replacing all the light bulbs in a room, that's not. So if we're replacing all the light bulbs in a room, that's not just a maintenance. That's, I'm going to do that because it's going to be cost effective and, you know, whatever. It's easier to the panel and whatever the convertage was, you know?
And, and if I can add too, you know, Jen and Michelle have been incredibly kind and conscientious to our department heads from the standpoint, whenever there were overages, you know, they would be proactive, see that, reach out to them and, and fix them. And at the time, at the time. So, um, I think that going forward, there will be an expectation that department heads are going to have a greater sense of responsibility to have an understanding about their budget and track their budget and manage their budget. At least that's my expectation, that that would be something that will be, you know, that there'll be a concentrated effort on education and accountability. And not that that's taking any way, anything away from Michelle and Jen. It's just that they did it because they knew what needed to be done and they took care of it. But I think that it's a teachable moment too, for department heads to understand all of the components that go into it, so.
Well, and as you're doing that, you do, you need to remember that as much as we can educate them, when you get to the audit, the buck stops with the finance director. It's not the department heads that are going to be called in, it is your finance director. So we can tell them to be mindful and I can tell you, most of them are. There's just some that do require a little bit more handholding. And that's okay. That, that is okay. Not, and I'm not contradicting what the administrators say at all, but.
So when we get down to the very, very bottom, you can see.
Jen, Doug had a question.
I just have one question about the classification between capital outlay and, and maintenance. I mean, like replace, if it's a trigger, I mean, like, so if, I'll give an example. So in an out, in here, there's an outlet that's bad and replaces that outlet. That's not.
That's Jerry's. Yep, because the size of the project is very small, very small, very, very.
So it isn't just the word then, then there's a dollar amount associated with the word. Cause that's, because that's only, I mean, like, everything on the roof isn't a capital outlay. If there's a repair on the outlet, I mean, he might replace some shingles. Replace doesn't make it a capital outlay, it has also.
And I don't have anything extra built in that there needs to be a shingle repair in Jerry's because it is cost allocated. So it drives the rest of your funding. So typically, if you have a roof repair, we ask John from GTR me. Or we take it from the general fund if it's a large, if it's a hundred, a couple hundred bucks, not a problem. But we're talking fifteen hundred to three to four, under that threshold, he can spend four thousand nine hundred and ninety or whatever it is. And he goes and spends that and I don't have it in here, now short sidekick. Short four. So there's kind of like a time and a place for what, when we cost allocate. So correct. Um, if I need, if he goes a circuit next door to the LSC and it's three grand plus the electrician or whatever with the supplies, that's a four seventy. That is, you're tearing out that electrical and you're putting all new in, that's a capital building improvement. Especially if it goes over five, now I'm creating an asset.
It's a strange way to, I mean, it's just different. I mean, I, I would assume capital building improvements would be one to change the functionality or add to the functionality of the building, not that maintain its existing functionality. Anything that maintains its existing functionality would seem to be maintenance and repair.
Except I, except we don't, we don't want to create a budget in, in, in essence of the what ifs with, if we knew it was something planned, maybe, but typically something like that is on an emergency basis. Or for instance, this, just this last Tuesday, you're doing a splitter in the sergeant's room. And it's a thousand dollars for them to do the roof. It's an eight thousand dollar project, that's not Jerry. You're technically replacing the heating and cooling though, see the dip?
Well, yeah, we're augmenting on, on, so that the functionality is being improved from what it was. So that makes it a capital improve in my mind, but, so that's, I guess where I'm still a little confused there, but.
Yeah, so what we want to do is, in essence, we don't want to drive the buildings and grounds if we don't, across everyone's budgets. If it's going to be something, like I said, if it's a light bulb of unchanging the whole floor, that's not what we wrote. Seven cents?
That does, yeah.
Yeah. Or carpet, cleaning, cleaning other carpets. I, I would have liked that to have stayed in Jerry's budget, except he didn't ask for that when we went to repair the twenty-two budget. So I didn't have it in there when at two thousand dollars a time, he had the carpets cleaned. And it equals eight thousand dollars. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I just see, seems extremely strange that we wouldn't include cleaning carpet in our maintenance budget.
Right. Because you'll see, yeah, because you'll see, it drives.
We, we know it has to happen, right?
Right, right. And I can look at it that the carpet, by having it cleaned, improved the life of the carpet. So it could be a capital improvement. Yep, so it's government versus, yeah.
Well, and seeing the carpets with full warnings so that it's still in the budget. It's different than over cleaning the carpet so much, it's already set, we didn't have to do that.
Right, ooh, right, eight thousand dollars, right.
I guess I go back to, I guess it'd be encouraging people put things that they know happen on a regular basis. I mean, no, no one would be, no one would be surprised that you have to clean the carpets now and then.
No.
Okay, I'm done believing that.
Jen, I, I have a question. Under the expenses, I don't see a line number for inmate medical cost.
Okay. So inmate medical costs from the jail is actually in the two eleven fund.
Okay.
And that's our, that's the fund that houses the jail money that comes in. When we sell out or when we, we collect inmates, then they pay us, that's in a separate fund. And that's a different, a different net.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so I think, yeah, I think for us, I really wanted to be able to go over my pretty, um, the pretty revenue that's charged to the general fund here. But I think we're going to bypass and go into the amendments just so that we can get down to the main video of what's going on. Um, so we'll set this one aside, maybe we can touch this again in May. So keep on to this one. This one that we gave you, the check of pretty colors here is the general fund. And this was at year end. So we just wanted to show you what our status was at year end. And so we can, we can do that in May.
And that's in the audacity and stuff.
Yep.
This is the snapshot, this is what they're looking at.
Yep. All right, so the very first budget amendment that you have is number twenty-three dash year zero two. Should be, um, zone.
Yeah. Yes, I put the five, um, and then the four, two, three, four, five, or six. Single sheets.
Okay. So I'm going to start with this one and then I'm going to work backwards for you. So this one to me for today is the simplest. Um, you'll read right from the very get go, the very first line, it says revenue five twenty-eight oh oh four ARC. Um, and that was of the treasurer at the time, we called it ERBA. Um, so we have moved, um, and done a budget amendment for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. You saw in your.
I saw it in there for the housing on Merrick Road.
So we don't budget our ARC dollars until we have a motion or an invoice. So that's where this comes from. So this one twenty-five is budgeted now as a revenue. And then on the bottom, you'll see the corresponding expense, it says American Rescue Plan Act one twenty-five. The next item down is five forty-eight. It says County Veteran Service Fund. Five thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars has been allocated to us from the state of Michigan. The corresponding expense is now at the very end under one oh one five eighty-six eighty-four. CDSF grant, and that number matches. I'm going to skip the middle two, the revenue sharing and the interest. And I'm going to go to donations K nine specific. So the donations K nine specific through January first to March thirty-first is sixty-three hundred dollars. Donations used to be in what we call the trust and agency. It was a very easy, easy way to not have to worry about money coming in and money coming out. A Gatsby ruling says that in the seven oh one, it can only be due to other agencies. So we had to create a new, excuse me, donations line item as a revenue and you'll see a corresponding expense. So currently, under the expense of two two five three oh one seven two seven oh oh five, donations K nine specific. Um, when we're preparing budget for you this year, you will not see a budget for any donation expenses. That is a year end or at the end of the year is when we would make that. So the forty thousand five seventy-six is what's the balance of twenty-two, collections at the end of twenty-two, and then what's been collected so far. So that he, his budgeted line item so far through March, forty thousand five seventy-six. The other donations that you see here are donations for sheriff and donations for animal control. Those are previous donations and these are the balances that are left in those budgets from twenty twenty-two. So we bring them forward to twenty-three. And they are pointed off and specifically handled this way until they reach the zero dollar. Back up to the revenue, under revenue sharing and interest, um, we have collected, um, actually more interest than what's on here. But basically I'm using that catch all, that revenue to cover those donations that were, didn't have something coming in this year. So the sheriff five thousand and the animal control thirty-nine sixty-nine, um, instead of what I would call using fund balance forward, um, which we'll talk about here in a couple of minutes. I use the budget of interest was fifteen. I think John's collected forty-nine thousand. So I, all I did there was, um, make this kind of like as a catch all available to you. On the revenue sharing, this line, this line item, five seventy-four, five twenty-seven eight fifty-three was budgeted from information provided by the state of Michigan Land Union. The firm number that I've located is the new number. And so I have adjusted that. Kathy and I will be looking at your general fund and we will be bringing forward amendments in May. When we budget the general fund, we use the previous year's tax numbers. So you just got your L four twenty-four, which was last week from, um, Andrew in Eglazation. He will be bringing you in May, your L four twenty-nine. You will set your mileage rate. When you set that mileage rate, that's the number I am going to implement in the twenty-three budget. So for instance, last year in twenty-two, the budget amount used was ten one. It came in at eleven two. This year it's ten eight. I suspect it could be as high as twelve, that you'll be collecting. I don't advise you as finance director how to hold on your L four twenty-nine. So when you look at the previous ones, I would hope that you would stay that as well. Um.
Roll back. Would you say that again?
I told you that I didn't give you advice. But my advice, if you're going to ask me, my public advice is no rollback.
Our, our comment would be, if you look at what you take in taxes and you, and Commissioner Lautner's well aware of this. And what, and look at what you take in from your tax base and you look at what we spend, your tax dollars do not support our budget. So rolling back would put you, you're going to have to increase service fees. Your tax base does not support it. So she will be absent next month on that.
And I'll touch that in just a couple of minutes. Yeah, I'll touch that in just in the next, in the next hour.
So revenue sharing, that's all we get from the state?
Yeah. This used to be, when you first came on, this used to be a POTS that we always looked at. It's Fund two eighty-three. It was revenue sharing that we got upfront of. We got to collect all the interest. The state hasn't balanced that account yet. There's like thirty-eight thousand dollars in there. And I keep asking Jerry, can we have the money yet? Can we have the money yet? Can we have the money yet? But I guess the state's behind in balancing since twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-one. So there could be some money, but that's correct. They pay us now instead of us paying us upfront, meaning to collect the interest. So that's, yeah, so that's what we have, five forty. All right, so let me go back to, we're going to go down into your, um, your ending one here. I'd like to go to the twenty-three oh oh six. So your twenty-three oh oh six is your resolution, amending the data processing IT fund. So when we talked about fund balance forward, in a governmental setting, fund balance forward would be looked at as the cash from prior years that should be utilized to balance your current budgets. Does that make sense? So you can technically think of it as a savings account. It is in relation to, it can be in relation to also the assets that you have on. So when the finance department is looking at budgets, you want to make sure that your fund balance matches your cash. So when you're utilizing your fund balance forward. So when I produced these budgets in twenty twenty-two, there was fund balance to balance the twenty-twenty-two's. There was not fund balance in twenty-three views. So the very first line item on this budget amendment, that's fund balance forward, you were to utilize twenty-three thousand seven seventeen. You do not have twenty-three thousand seven seventeen to utilize. So that means that we then increased the charges for services. The charges for services and a cost allocation hits those budgets that those services would be rendered for. In this case, I'm taking five hundred and fifty-five that was down our budgeted and I am increasing that number to seven hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy. Reason being is the adjustments on the bottom to the expenses. We have the slight increase for salaries for this year, the social security and retirement tied to that. The contractual services. Most recently, within the last couple of years, upon Ron Flomandin's retirement, the board decided by board action to enter into a contract with safety net. Kathy and I discussed it prior to, over this weekend, that I would like to separate that contractual line item so that you as a board see what you're paying that safety net in essence. Same thing I'm going to do with D and W. You have a solid contract with a third party, you need to know what that is. Okay? So what I did is I pulled a portion of what was budgeted out of contractual, the eighty-six. So when the budget for twenty-three was prepared, there was a contractual line item for safety net in there. Overboard motion in last year, it was increased. I was losing finance and then it got adjusted. So we're behind the gate. So if you had an increase in your contract of twenty-five thousand in twenty-two, and now you have an increase in twenty-three, that wasn't budgeted, this is where this, this money's coming, this is where this is coming, needs to be reallocated.
This is a catch up.
Yep, it's a catch up. So you'll see here, the contractual services went down by eighty-six and then the safety net, um, is now booked in at one twenty-nine seven thirty-five. You'll see in our next discussion in a couple of minutes, the buildings and grounds charges, they went up nominally, or you know, minimally, twenty-nine hundred dollars. But again, Jerry's budget goes up, that's cost allocated and that goes into Leanna's budget for IT. And that has to be classified to everybody as well. Depreciation on her assets, so anything purchased that's over five thousand dollars. Um, there was nothing budgeted for twenty twenty-three, so we've increased that by seven. And then the capital outlay. So I was very grateful when Kathy and I came on mid-December that the firmware, software server was not able to be installed in twenty twenty-two. For the link. At the, the quote of that price was sixty-eight thousand dollars and you had sixty-seven in your fund. So we were able to confirm with safety net that that firmware and that server was not coming onboard and be installed until one one twenty-three. So it was budgeted in twenty-two, but with other expenses contractually, there was no money to actually appeal for that asset. So we lucked out. Everybody lucked out. And so we're allocating now and increasing her capital outlay to include the project from twenty-two in twenty-three. All right? Then she was very glad to have spoken with me. Um, because she turned in for your website for fifty thousand dollars. It didn't get plugged in here. It's a data entry error between one twenty-seven and one seventy-seven. Pretty, pretty big error. So that was fifty thousand that wasn't budgeted. So it's these little things and details, again, I know what I'm looking for. Michelle tells people all the time, she's trained me well. I don't look for what you did right, I look for what you did wrong. When I'm looking at a document, I'm finding what's, what's wrong with the document. If it's perfect, that's awesome. What I'm looking to see is something missed, so that's how I look at your documents here. So that being said, this hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, within these other budget amendments, is now being cost allocated to all your departments. Uh, just on this capital, just on this, um, this cost allocation for IT. Now, I'm hoping that she will have money left over. Um, that's the goal. I hope that I'm not here in November redoing this again. But it all depends on, on what Leanna's needs are. It also depends on, is this a project that can wait? Leanna's needs are, it also depends on, is this a project that can wait? You know, is there something that maybe she put in her capital outlay that we can say, we can hold off on that and do that next year? You know? Typically, when I budget, I budget so that I don't have these large swings. I like to keep it nice and calm. So to me, this is a large swing. What can happen is if it doesn't all get spent, it could be a different swing in '24. You know, maybe there'll be fund balance and cash in there, maybe there won't. So it'll just be something we're working, we're working on. When I spoke with Leanna last Monday, no one had expressed to her how to fill out, how to complete your budget.
Jen, Commissioner Rexroth had a question.
Just going back to that, we were fortunate that this '22, '22 project didn't happen in 2022, but it wasn't budgeted in 2022 anyway?
It was. It was budgeted in 2022, but other expenses that were either board-approved or got contractual... Let's say, for instance, I was the finance director in April, and in May or June, a board motion was made and thirty thousand dollars was spent, that didn't get reallocated. Another motion gets made in September, she's going to purchase her safety net, it's going to come in for another twenty, that didn't get redone. So these are what you would call living document. These, these funds need to be looked at at least monthly, if not twice a, you know, in a two-month period, to make sure, is that budgeted? So somebody like me...
So, so just ask you, so if someone comes in and they give you that request, I need another thirty-five thousand, and we ask, is it in your budget?
And those questions were asked.
And those questions, and they say yes, because there's money there, but they haven't spent it yet, it really isn't in the budget, because it was, it was committed. So how do I ask that question? Because that sounds like a very convoluted answer.
You ask it just the way you've asked it.
Yep.
Because the answer would be no, because in this type of budget, everything is detailed as to what's in there. And when someone comes in with a thirty thousand dollar request, they've got to know it's not in their budget. It wasn't budgeted, but if they know of another project that went to the wayside, then you can say, yes, I have it in my budget, because this project that you approved for fifty-two thousand, we decided we can hold off for a year so we can use this...
I get that, I just understand how we, how we got there, if that's the case, if people were asking if it's in the budget and it wasn't.
And in Leanna's case, she actually, I mean, I told Kathy, she actually gave them the number one seventy-seven.
Right.
But...
There was two versions. There was her first submission, which got put into your proposed budget for 23, and then she later, subsequent submission, which was not reflected.
And so she's working from her second submission, which was never part of the budget.
So when she said it was in her budget, she, she was under the impression it was in her budget?
It is, it is now five minutes to our next meeting, and Michelle needs a little bit of time. Ken, are we willing to pick this up again in May, right where we are?
If you want to be, if you want us to at one change, if you want more descriptions, I'm even certainly more than happy to, to go into a little bit more detail, but I think you got the gist of it, with the general budget, how it works, the cost allocation, and how it's, how it's driving the board.
This packet will be before you in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You need to keep close handy for the next meeting.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we do have another meeting at seven, but if you, and there will be public comment at that meeting. If you want to make public comment now, you're welcome to. If you'd like to wait until the second meeting that starts at seven, we should have a larger public here, and it would relate to discussion of that meeting probably. Any other public comment? You're here, I think, to speak about community mental health. Yes, that's on the agenda for the next meeting, want to wait for that? Okay. Any commissioner comment?
Thanks, you guys.
We will, we will adjourn for five minutes.
Yeah, we're going to get demoted.
Meeting adjourned.